We're going to call the Tuesday, December 15, 2015, Manistee City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Mayor Proton Gustaf?
Here.
City manager? City attorney?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
And, uh, fire instructor?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comment on agenda-related items. Is there anyone who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Josh Bellin, 815 Dinsen Street. Good evening. Sir, that I wasn't able to make the work session last week, um, I had the pleasure to volunteer for the city of Manistee as chairperson on the ad hoc deer herd committee. At this time, I would like to thank the public for their participation in the public survey that committee set forth, thanks to the public library, now the guests, speakers for their time and support. In regards to the majority of the committee's recommendations, I myself cannot support a call. At quote like Tony Adman, begin quote, "A call for the city of Manistee will be experimental in nature," end quote. This lethal method has the potential to result in a rebound effect. They can contribute to an actual increase in deer population due to the sudden decrease in numbers. In regards to the BZB study, we didn't have a presentation. Due to it is up to council's discretion to invite Stephanie Bowles Griffin, just like Ann Arbor and Grant Haven, for a presentation and an onsite evaluation. Lethal and non-lethal are similar, as in both are paid by the hour, an annual expense, and experimental. Main difference is one is lethal by choice and the other is let nature take its course. I think a portion of the five grand proposal should be invested in aerial survey, which is what other cities have performed year after year to show an incline or decline trend in deer population. I believe aerial survey is the missing piece of research we need. Speaking of research, with all due respect, in regards to the deer accident dispatch report, when chronologically and categorized, the report shows a decline in accidents and cause, which would suggest stable or declining herd, where the deer are using the crosswalks. A call is ineffective and does nothing to address the underlying issues of the citizens. We will always have deer. A call is a quick fix to an indefinite issue. The other portion of the five grand proposal should be applied through our city website as recommended in the final report. We set up a whitetail deer section with information addressing the public concerns by educating them with factual information. Examples of factual information on website that are proven effective are facts about Lyme disease, fencing around gardens, or apple trees, deer-resistant plants, and how to live with deer. Also include in same section a public deer survey on our webpage that the public can actually take on the website. That was the number one question I had. Example of an excellent website is Ann Arbor and Rochester Hills, Michigan. Enforcement of our no feed ordinance along with public outreach is paramount. If we do not do those two things, any other method will not be effective, and it will be a waste of taxpayers' dollars. We have to learn causes of wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, and notification regarding next work session.
I'll make a motion to approve the action, or take action to approve the consent agendas presented. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Whitlam, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any other question? Seeing none, we please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Gustaf?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of amendments to city council guidelines. City council guidelines are reviewed annually at the organizational meeting in November. Council continue the review and discussion at the December 8 work session. Amendments under consideration include updates to reasonable meeting notice requirements, code of ethics, and audit committee. Additional discussion anticipated on council member participation on boards and commissions, and any opportunity to combine or eliminate a board or commission at a future date. At this time, council could take action to adopt the amended city council guidelines.
I'll make a motion and we take action to adopt the amended city council guidelines.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Beaton, to approve the amended council guidelines. Any further discussion?
I've got, um, comments on two of the suggested changes. One of them on the code of ethics. I think the way it's written is a little bit overly restrictive in a, just to give you an example, if during the winter when we got heavy snowfall with stuff, I as a citizen decide to pick a box of donuts out to the city garage for the public work people to retreat, that shouldn't be a violation. I'm not soliciting any special service or consideration. It's just simply a means of showing appreciation for the efforts that people are doing. And I think the same thing would follow through here for the holiday season. If I decided to take some cookies to the police department, or over to the fire department, I don't think there should be some issue or restriction with the people having a small token of someone's appreciation. And I think the way it's written at this time would restrict that.
I think it was written to mimic what's in the...
Yeah, I mean, I took that as the city council guidelines, not necessarily the city staff or personnel, but like...
Where it was written was for city employees.
I had recommended it, and I had meant it toward the city council members.
I thought we amended it to mimic what was already in, uh...
In their handbook.
That we didn't want any of this...
The minutes had it, um, I'm just saying, what I read in the agenda package for the suggested changes, it seemed to include just about everybody.
Acceptance of solidification of gifts, gratititudes, bribes, or rewards from any person, business, or organization is prohibited. And that is directed towards us. Code of ethics. Councilmembers, public officers, members of boards and commissions, and employees occupied positions of public trust. Am municipal businesses must be subject to the scrutiny of public opinion, both as to the legality and to the proprietary of such business. In addition to matters of financial interest, councilmembers, public officers, advisory board members, employees shall refrain from making use of special knowledge or information before it is available to the general public, and shall refrain from using public offices in method of directly or indirectly varying self, friends, customers, clients, family members, business associates, or any other special interests. And then it goes on.
I just would like to make sure that that's, what I'm suggesting would not be restricted. Mr. Taylor, is there anything in there that would keep me from dropping off the box of donuts, or some cookies or something?
I can't imagine that there'd be an objection to that sort of thing.
I don't know, I was just preferring because the first sentence says, uh, boards and commissions and employees, so...
I think that, you know, if we read it literally and very strictly, you're right. But I just can't imagine that, you know, that someone would challenge what you're suggesting as a gift to accrue that's doing some work. I mean, I don't think that's what the intent of that language is.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't do something outside the rules, or we weren't changing something that would be overly restrictive, so...
And I think the language that the mayor had and the intent behind it is that those gifts are intended to get preferential treatment for someone, or to sway a councilperson's action, or to sway a city staff person's action. So without something in addition to just dropping off, like what you're suggesting, I don't see that that would...
Thank you for the clarification. Yep.
Any other comments? Will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gustaf?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of council committee appointments. At this time, the mayor can take action to make various council committee appointments. As far as who's on these committees will remain the same with a few minor changes due to a new council member. The change on the audit committee, Ed Cody, we removed, and we're going to add Mayor Proton Gustaf. On the MRA board, replace Councilmember Zelinski with Councilmember Beaton. And on the utilities committee, replace former Councilmember Ed Cody with Councilmember Beaton. Next, we'll move on to the consideration of bids for the fire station exhaust removal system. Earlier this year, the city was awarded a federal grant in the amount of $47,620 to purchase and install an exhaust management system for the city fire station. Bids were solicited and received as follows. Diesel exhaust, the war diesel for $36,165.24, seat-only bid. The gasoline exhaust, clean air concepts for $13,782, and the air vac for $18,745. The recommended bid is for the clean air concepts for $13,782. At this time, council could take action to accept the bid of $36,165.24 for more diesel for a diesel exhaust system, and the bid of $13,782 for a clear, clean air concept for the gasoline exhaust system, and a 5% local match of $2,0381.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Smith, to accept the bids. Is there any further discussion?
The only question I've got is that we're paying, we pay 5% for someone to write a grant for this in addition to the matching money, what was in the minutes?
That's correct. Earlier this year, when we accepted the grant, we agreed to pay 5% to the grant writer, which was part of the contract we had to get. This is 5%, we had to pay for the material. So the total grant matched us at 10% when you combined the two. But this part of 5% is to the paper material.
AES did not prepare the grant for us?
No, sir. DNR consultant Alancy did this for us.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I would like to thank Chief Bachman for your detailed email as to where you're going to get those matching funds. I really appreciate that. That's exactly what I wanted to see on all purposes going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we please take the roll.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gustaf?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution 2015 Manistee County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. The emergency management coordinator for Manistee County has been working on a hazard mitigation plan for several months. The plan has been reviewed and adopted by the county. The next step is for the city and townships to adopt it as well. By adopting the plan, the city becomes an eligible partner with Manistee County to respond to and mitigate the effects of a natural disaster. In addition, it makes the city eligible to receive federal disaster relief through the county in the event of a natural disaster. As your motion to take action to adopt.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlam, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to adopt the 2015 Manistee County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there any questions or comments?
Well, I've had many throughout the day on this, and I've tried to clear up as many as I can in my own head. Basically, I just still am confused what part of Manistee County is designated in a flood zone where they would be required to have flood insurance.
Anybody here need a turn? You say it one more time, please.
I'll try. Where in the county of Manistee is it designated as a flood zone where people would have to buy flood insurance?
Now, I have no idea what part of the flood zone is federally designated. This isn't part of the flood zone management plan either. There is a federal plan, to my entertainment, that is specific to flood zones. That's not what this is.
I understand that. I think what I'm struggling with is trying to see if any of these layers overlap, or people will have a misconception as to whether or not they can drop their insurance in some cases. So that's why I'm asking for it.
Your question is probably deeper than I could answer.
It's deeper than anybody I answered it to.
Because I did go to the state regional guy, well, we got an email from him this morning. We reported that to you. And Ken Falk, emergency manager coordinator, both of those telling me this has zero to do with flood management or flood insurance. The purpose of this is if there's a natural disaster, and the mayor declares a natural disaster that impacts the city, and the county declared a natural disaster, and the president declared a natural disaster, and we mitigate that, this allows us to collect funds. For instance, several years ago, we lost the 12th Street slide, we lost part of Harper Drive, we lost Colma Sacks and stuff all over the state of Michigan. We received several FEMA dollars to pay for quite a bit of that stuff. It wasn't a plan to pay individual homeowners or individual property owners. It was a plan to pay us, reimburse the city of Manistee for our work. It wasn't an insurance plan or a mitigation plan for individual homeowners. This isn't applied to, this doesn't affect individual people individually.
So when you're talking about FEMA dollars in this plan, is it only going to affect like infrastructure and not personal property?
And that might be a deeper answer than I have. It might be that other issues that affect personal property. This allows me as the police chief, and Thad as the city manager, to build back for our infrastructure. When we did the hazard mitigation plan, we didn't detail homes, we didn't detail fire item, we detailed roads, bridges, courthouses, city hall, those kind of things that we were looking at to protect schools, that kind of stuff. So if, for instance, a tornado came through and wiped out the high school in part of our infrastructure, and we declared a natural disaster, I believe there'd be federal funds that might flow to fix that. There are other federal programs that flow to fix other things, but this is specific to the government versus individual homeowners.
But doesn't the governor have to come in his state and look at everything and say, this is state of emergency, and then it's declared a disaster still?
Actually, it has to start with, in our case, it starts with the mayor, and it goes to the county, and then goes to the region, and goes to the state.
Now, I guess reading through this mitigation plan, I think in order for us to qualify for any kind of federal grant, they want you to have a plan, which means they want you to go through the county and identify based on what kind of natural disasters that your area could incur. Having identified those, then what type of steps you can take to mitigate the damages. They want a plan in place to make people look at their county, their, where they live, to identify those, try and mitigate them in order to receive funds for them.
I think that's a great summary. That's how I see it too. We probably wouldn't have a natural disaster plan for radiation from a nuclear plant because we're not part of that, but we would be tornadoes, snow, other events.
But it's the way for the government to get you to look at your community, what kind of natural disasters you could incur.
Force us to be a little bit proactive, potentially, at the emergency management level.
I think it also identifies, or it requires you to identify the assets within that community that can qualify for those funds. And if we don't do an inventory on those as a part of this hazard mitigation plan, it becomes more of a, you know, triage of what qualifies for national or state or national funding, or federal funding for reimbursement. So, you know, those are, they sit on three other emergency management teams with that county here, Acosta, Osceola, and Manistee. So there's hazard plans like this in all of those communities, and they're required to have those to qualify for any of that funding, as Chief Bachman mentioned.
We're part of a county, we're also part of a region, and the region's part of the state, and we're part of region seven.
I'm sorry, that would be great, but where are the assets? I didn't see this in the report, in the documentation.
It's a, there's a complete map. I'd have to look at the report myself again to go through it, but it is all mapped out on an asset list, but I can see to it you get that.
I'm just curious. I just, I just want to be able to explain this to somebody if I'm asked about, we already can get FEMA money, we can apply for it whether we're in this plan or not.
I don't know if that's true. I can't say that it's true or not true, that we can apply for FEMA money not being in the plan. I know we cannot apply for, receive FEMA money for not in play for certain events. That must have been made clear to me for today.
Okay. If, I would like to get a copy of what the assets are supposed to be, so that I know the first...
The report that I put on the server and came through was like 48 pages. Did you see the entire report?
I did.
Okay. I'll see what I missed in there, and I'll check with Ken Falk and look at any assets in the map.
Any other questions or comments? Will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gustaf?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of deer herd management. At the December 8, 2015 work session, city council was presented the ad hoc deer herd committee report and recommendations. Committee recommendations are as follows. Implement a feeding ban. Reduction in the size of existing deer herd. Explore the contracting of the services of the USDA. Ongoing analysis, annual survey to evaluate the public perception. Provide public education via city's website, and appropriate resources to facilitate this process. Following discussion, council requested this item be placed on the next agenda for the consideration, and to set a spending limit of up to $5,000. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. At this time, council could take action on the deer hunt, oh, ad hoc deer herd committee report and recommendations by providing direction to appropriate staff and setting a spending limit of up to $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, supported by Councilmember Whitlam, to take action on the ad hoc deer herd committee report and recommendations. Is there any other comments or questions? I don't recall, was there ever a dollar amount put out for the non-lethal method of herd management? I don't think we ever looked at that in total, what that cost would be, that would cost the city. To do a cost comparison?
I think, I think the expense in the past and the experience, as was reported by USDA, is that some communities have budgeted a certain amount of resources, and it took less to accomplish the goal that they set out to do. In one example, a community had budgeted $7,500, they're paid on an hourly basis, and it took $500 to reduce the herd to the level they had stayed, and that's where they stopped.
And I was talking about the non-lethal. There was options I would have brought up for the non-lethal method, and I was wondering, right? And I was wondering if we had ever put a total to that method versus the lethal.
Estimates I see are in the $300-$500 range per animal for about a three-year period of time, with about a 50% chance of success in sterilization, so...
And how many deer are we looking at to, if this is approved?
We looked at, what was it, before chief, perm net up to 50? So if you tried to sterilize that many deer, you'd be looking at about $15,000, so... And that would be very temporary, so...
Again, as you mentioned, you know, having looked at everything, it's not a safety issue. And as Councilmember Zelinski had asked that we do a survey, which they did do a survey, the majority of those who did respond preferred the non-lethal method. It was presented earlier tonight, that not all options have been explored for the non-lethal method. I'm just not willing, I don't think we've exhausted that yet. As you said, it's not a safety, and barring of guns within or near the city limits is to me a safety issue, and one I don't think that we should be taking on at this point. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we please take the roll.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gustaf?
No.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notice this communication announcement, we have none this evening, so we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comments, it's an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes, and letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety director?
Nothing, Your Honor, picture.
I name starter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Beaton?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Just wish everybody happy holidays.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yeah, we also talked about last week about having maybe a meet and greet with the committees, and not, this is a minor amount, but Kirsten and I were willing to write a hundred dollar check towards it, you know, that when it's not coming out of taxpayer money, it's coming out of my money, to show, to have dinner, night and dinner, but cookies, whatever, reception. That's just roughing on, Mayor Chris, everybody.
Councilmember Smith?
I would go along with Councilmember Goodspeed. I would certainly be willing to contribute to fund a meet and greet as opposed to taking money out of the budget, so we could get something like that going, get some committee visits. visibility and exposure. I think it would be a positive thing, and the longer we wait, the more opportunity will be. I would like to wish everybody, since we won't meet again until the holidays, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'd like to thank Public Safety, excellent response during the sleigh belt parade by the rescue squad for a couple of people, and great police work on our other issues that we've had in the city lately. Good job, chief.
Councilmember Whitliff?
I just want to thank the gals that put together the persons purse program. They gathered over 800 purses for West Fortune. I approve that Manistee is a giving community.
Mayor Proton Gustin?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Again, I want to reiterate, congratulations, and thanks to Chief Bachman. Traffic flow worked well on this sleigh belt weekend. I don't know if we had a final head count, but that had been one of the biggest ones I've seen in the last 10 years, and it was incredible. I have to thank Patrick Kay in the downtown folks. We have the mayor from Big Rapids here, people from Grand Rapids, Lansing, Detroit. I bumped into just hundreds of people that, from all the other walks of life that I've had, and it was a pretty incredible weekend, so the weather held out quite nicely, so nice job on execution, and support from our team. I'll also say happy holidays, and I'd be more than happy to contribute to whatever the team feels that they'd like to do for an open house, so that's all I have.
And I'd just like to wish my first official meeting for our new city manager.
Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate the comments made by my fellow council members, that I hope everyone has a very nice holiday, I hope their travels are safe, and I wish everyone a heart's first New Year. And we beg of you to be a good functionary. Manager.